Good evening. I'd like to thank all of you for being here this evening. I know that doing a forum in this way with no audience and just video is different for everybody this year, so we'll be kind of nice to each other for whatever little faux pas we make during it. We're videoing this forum and it will be available to you probably sometime tomorrow night or Saturday morning. We're going to release the two videos, this one and the one from District Five together at whatever time we get that finished. The League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area own the copyright to the video and we'll make it available to you as I said. You've agreed already that you, your organizations, campaigns, and supporters will not use the forum or any audio or video clips or transcripts for political advertising. The League of Women Voters is an organization that does not support or oppose any candidate. And since this video is made by us, it is important that it remain intact. As long as you show the whole thing, you can show it wherever you want. You can let people look at it in whatever format you would like them to do. Tonight, in the beginning, you'll have two minutes for an opening statement. I will call on each candidate and Kristin is going to be our timer. Kristin, you want to show the timing things? So you'll start when I start you and then you'll get a 30-second warning and a stop warning. After opening statements, I will ask each of you questions and you'll have 90 seconds to answer. I'll rotate each time so that you'll get a chance to be first and last on one or two occasions. So please wait until I call on you. So the first question starts with Cory.
Will we have a chance at opening statements?
Sorry, the first opening statement goes to Cory. Cory, you're first.
Is it two minutes for opening statements?
Yes.
Well, good evening and I'd like to begin, of course, by thanking the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this candidate's forum and providing members of our community an opportunity to get to know all of the candidates running for city council here in District One. I have called Claremont home for 46 years. I grew up here in the community. I attended the United Church of Christ preschool, Whittle Country Day School, the web schools. I went on to Loyola Marymount University in Los Angeles where I received my degree in business administration. I have served on your city council now for 15 years and I've been on the council both in good times and in bad times. Some of you may recall the housing bubble, economic downturn going back to 2008 and I was on council at that time. And I worked with my colleagues to help pull our community back from that situation. We had choices. We were presented the choice of possibly looking at raising our utility tax. Our council at that time decided unanimously to pursue economic development. And in so doing, we brought in businesses such as Super King, Norms, Sam Luong, Sprouts, and many others. And at the high point of our efforts, we saw our vacancy rate for commercial drop to 2% citywide, which was huge. We also were able to increase our reserves from the minimum 25% to 31% at that time. Of course, they've come back a little bit obviously since then with some of the financial challenges we have. The main reason that I'm running, I was actually encouraged by many residents to run in this election because as some of you know, in the last election, three of my former longtime colleagues, Sam Pedrosa and others, decided not to continue on the council and we have three relatively new city council members. And so in this election also, we'll have one new member from District Five. So many people believe it's important to have a balance of new faces, new ideas, but also to have some individuals with institutional memory and experience. And that is what I offer the council and what I will continue to bring as a member of your city council. And I look forward to answering questions here shortly. Thank you.
Next opening statement is from Christine.
Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum tonight. I'm really happy to be with you all. I'm Christine Margiata, candidate for Claremont City Council here in District One. And Claremont has been a longtime home for me. I spent my childhood here, went to college at Scripps College, rented my first apartment right here in Claremont. And I often talk about my experience here in Claremont as the roots of what has been the last two decades of working in community and tackling some of our region's toughest challenges. So I've had the opportunity to work on issues like homelessness, substance abuse, racial and economic justice, education. And in all of those cases, I've had the experience of bringing community together around a shared vision and striving towards that vision, stepping into action and really making real progress. So I've had the opportunity to lead organizations. I'm currently the executive director of a nonprofit organization. I've managed large budgets, public and private. And more than anything, I've had the opportunity to build coalitions, both deep and broad coalitions, in order to really get things done. So that's a big part of what motivated me to step into this campaign. I didn't expect to run for city council. I very much love the work that I do in my day job. I have two young kids. But as I've witnessed our community and the city navigate this pandemic over the last six months and all of the intersectional crises that we're facing, I realize I have a background and a skill set that can help this city not only navigate this moment, but build a strong foundation for the future. So I'm proud to be in this race. I've had an incredible experience talking to our residents already and I look forward to the conversation this evening.
Next opening statement is from Ethan.
Hello. Thank you for having me tonight. It's really great to be here. Ever since I turned 18, I've been a member with the National Organization for Women. So it's actually a real privilege to be here with the League tonight. And so I appreciate this opportunity and thank you for hosting. You know, born and raised in Claremont, this community has always meant the world to me, which is why I've never left it. The character of its residents and its institutions helped to shape who I am today and I'm all the better for it. From a young age, I was interested in politics and policy. And that's why since I turned, you know, 14 years old, I know very old, I've been, I was volunteering on political campaigns every election cycle because I always wanted to, you know, chip in and lend a hand to a cause I believe in. I even traveled to Washington DC with my rabbi and some friends at Temple Beth Israel on Town Avenue to attend a social action conference and meet with our representatives, our members of Congress, to discuss issues of national importance. And, you know, I got into this race to bring a fresh, you know, young perspective to our city council. Many city councils around the country do not have a youthful perspective and ours included, which is very strange considering we're a college town. You know, despite that, there have been some changes happening all across the country. From, you know, people like Savante Myrick, who's now the mayor of Ithaca, New York, and joined his city council at a very young age, my age, 22, to Michael Tubbs, who's now, you know, the mayor of a major city and is in national headlines all the time. You know, I won't pretend to have all the answers, but as a 22-year-old and a recent college graduate, you know, I have a personal stake in the direction of our society, not just for the next 30 or 40 years, but for the next 70 or 80 years. And it's my firm belief that, you know, someone like me, someone who can really represent my generation, should be playing a major role in shaping our community. And so that's what brings me here today. So thank you.
Next opening statement comes from Zachary.
Well, first off, it's an honor to be able to address the League of Women Voters, particularly this year when we have a number of things to celebrate in a year that we usually don't think very highly of so far. One, of course, is the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote. And the origins of the League of Women Voters in their fight for women's suffrage and also for their bipartisan support over the years for elections and educating voters. So thanks for organizing this and it's a pleasure to be here. I also want to say that, you know, I was as touched as anybody by the passing of Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She's someone that I had the chance to meet when I was in graduate school, just learning about the Constitution. And she'll be dearly missed and is also a terrific example to everyone, men and women, about our Constitution and rights and equality under law. I'm running for Claremont City Council because I believe in this community and I also understand that despite the fact that we feel alone right now, that when we hear messages from Washington and sometimes Sacramento, we're constantly told that we're on our own. We're also in a very different kind of election, you know, a November election where national issues tend to pervade on what's happening here in the community. I've tried to approach this new district election as looking at an opportunity for us to reengage with each other as neighbors and as a community. I have a lot of experience in Claremont, having first moved here in 1995 and getting heavily involved in different aspects of our community. I hope to have a chance to talk to you more about that, you know, from serving on the Pilgrim Place Board, I just had a board meeting at four, to also being president of a nonprofit, Housing Claremont, that supports ending homelessness and increasing housing. So I have deep commitments. I have a deep understanding and I look forward to bringing that experience to you and dedicating myself to the future of Claremont. Thank you.
The first question will go to Christine. Christine, here is the question. The city was forced to make significant cuts in order to balance the budget this year and yet we still face a structural deficit going forward. How would you approach creating a balanced budget?
Yeah, the budget process has been one that I've closely followed and has been a major focus of our campaign. So I'm deeply concerned about the structural deficit and also was concerned to see the way the budget process moved forward. This is an incredibly challenging year. Our residents are facing a pandemic, you know, physical health challenges, mental health challenges, and certainly financial challenges. And, you know, what I would like to see our community look to for the future is setting a long-term vision for what it is this community needs. So how do we create a comprehensive needs assessment of what's needed in this community, for our seniors, for our youth? What are the services and supports that we need to sustain this community and to really thrive? How do we maximize the resources that we have as a second step? So let's look at our existing resources and let's see how far we can go in meeting those needs. And then finally, getting creative around how is it that we can meet those needs? Any further gap that we find between what we have and what we need? How do we build public-private partnerships? How do we build relationships across this region to creatively problem-solve around these challenges? And finally, if needed, going back to our voters for a tax measure, whether it be a sales tax, a transient occupancy tax, a property transfer tax, we have many options in this community. But first, I think our residents need to see and feel that long-term vision that we create collectively.
Thank you. Next answer will come from Ethan. Ethan, would you like me to read the question again?
No, I've got it. Thank you. No, I mean, while we are in a very serious budget problem right now and it started way before COVID and COVID exacerbated it certainly. You know, we must continue to explore additional revenue sources like new businesses, particularly popular, high-revenue generating businesses like Super King. That brought a lot of revenue to the city. But the city also needs to find a way to cut costs in response to the deficit. Claremont provides, you know, more routine services in-house than do many cities in the region, which greatly increases our city's pension obligation. You know, this is why the California State Auditor ranks Claremont in the bottom 20% in terms of fiscal health for California cities. The city has gotten to the point where it must consider alternative methods. Even if it'll be a difficult road, we must consider it for providing city services or our city risks failing to meet its fundamental obligations to its citizens. You know, by contracting out certain tasks, we could say millions of dollars per year in the long run, and, you know, maintain quality service. And we could use these savings to invest in our community in various ways and not saddling our children and grandchildren, people like me, with, you know, a rising debt for which we're going to pay the price in the end. You know, I want the city to really succeed in the long run and always be a great place for people to live and we really need to make a change.
Next answer comes from Zachary.
So I've been involved in trying to help fix Claremont's structural deficit for some time. I was part of the Measure CR campaign. I helped write the voter's guide statements. I helped with some of the strategy. And because I saw it as really the one way that we could try to fix what is a structural deficit, meaning our revenues just aren't meeting our needs right now in the city of Claremont. And COVID has only made that worse. The thing that was disappointing to me about CR was, first off, that it was so close, but that it was so unnecessary. I mean, we have a budget deficit, but I think we also have a trust deficit in this town. You know, our budget woes started to begin when the water issue failed. I voted for Measure W like so many people in Claremont did because of water prices and our hopes for a brighter future. But unfortunately, we had to raid our emergency fund and saddle our budget on top of other challenges that we have already involving pensions. So we need, I think, a short-term vision and a long-term vision. The short-term vision, I think, has to be something that could consider another sales tax initiative, but we can't put all our eggs in one basket. On the city council, I promise, I will dedicate myself to the issue of holding the council accountable and solving long-term, looking at business, looking at structure, looking at efficiencies, to make Claremont work again, because right now it's broken, but we can fix it.
Thank you. Cory, it's your turn.
Thank you. We have to remember that, of course, with the failure of Measure CR, the council was moving on $2 million in cuts, which was the way we were addressing the structural deficit. COVID came along and threw a wrench in the works, requiring that through June, we needed to reduce another million dollars, which we have accomplished at this time. But in the short term, we're still in the midst of COVID and I think we all kind of expected that this might end a little sooner and it continues to go on. Although the good news here in the short term is that we implemented the Al fresco program, which is allowing many of our restaurants to continue to function. And of course, that helps them. It also generates some level of sales tax revenue to the community. But we do have to acknowledge too, that with the closure of the colleges right now or the fact that they're operating online, I should say, our hotels are hurting. And, you know, the colleges are an economic driver and they bring people to our community. So as soon as we have the opportunity to move out of COVID and our colleges are back again, we do need to work very hard to bring in businesses again, to help those businesses that are still existing to continue to thrive out of COVID. And we're going to have to work together as a community. I mean, the point is, everybody has ideas on what to cut and what not to cut. You know, what one person doesn't value is a treasure to someone else. And so it's very important that we do this collaboratively with our residents, involve them in our town hall style of governance as we've always done. That's an important element to all of this as well, that we're working together, collaborating. Thank you.
Question two will begin with Ethan. Earlier this year, Claremont entertained replacing CPD with LACSD, sorry, police. That effort failed after citizens came out in a show of force overwhelmingly support of our local police force. Sorry for that outside noise. Now, many within the city are calling for police reform and a reallocation of police department funding. What do you see as the future of public safety and law enforcement in Claremont?
Yeah, so I'd love to address that. You know, I mean, it was something to look into, I really think, to contract with the sheriff's department. But in the end, I do support the decision to stick with our police department because I do think that we have one of the better departments in Southern California and we have great officers and a good chief. And so as long as we keep addressing the problems that exist in our current department, I think that's a step in the right direction. I think we need a civilian oversight committee that can actually, that actually has teeth, that can make decisions on instances of police misconduct and use of force. More broadly, I think we need to reimagine what a first responder is. I advocate for a multi-city or a county-wide first responder program to dispatch resources that are most appropriate for the situation at hand when someone calls 911. I mean, these first responders would be unarmed and trained in specific fields of expertise such as homeless assistance, mental health interventions, domestic disputes, or general disturbances. The result would be fewer responses by armed police officers to low-risk situations and a gradual, hopefully a gradual reduction in police department funding to match the lower demand for police services. Although these first responders will require remuneration, the cost would be far less than what we currently pay for police services. You know, for generations, we've been taught that policing, armed policing, is a panacea. We were taught as kids to, you know, call 911 if anything goes wrong. But we got to realize it's a specialized resource for dangerous situations. And so I think it's time for us to use our resources in Claremont more efficiently and more humanly.
Next answer comes from Zachary.
Thanks for this question. You know, it reminds me in a way, talking about, you know, sheriffs versus our own police department, of sounding the alarm on losing our metro league station. It was just a matter of informing the citizenry and they responded strongly and clearly that we want our own local police department and I am in support of that. I do think community policing is best when it is local. And along those lines, we have an opportunity and I think we're starting a process of taking advantage of that opportunity, to use the police commission for what it was originally for. And it dates back to 1999 when I was a senior at CMC and there was a shooting of a black man here in Claremont that prompted an investigation and kind of soul-searching in Claremont. And I think, you know, what we're doing now is just the right approach in the sense that if we have a police department, we want it to reflect our values in terms of policing. And I think that's what we're waking up to. And I think this starts with the police commission, but where it ends, where the buck stops, is with the city council. And I will say that we can do nothing that will undermine the ability of the police and the police department to be able to live up to their primary mission of public safety. But I do think there are many ways to think about policing and first responders where we can be smarter, more efficient, and we can also meet the challenges that aren't always faced when it comes to mental health issues, when it comes to homelessness, when it comes to things where maybe the police are not the best first responders.
Thank you. Next answer comes from Cory.
I want to preface my response by making it unequivocally clear that I do not support reallocating or shifting police funding at this point in time. I realize that our police department costs a lot of money, but as you alluded to, our citizens made it clear that they want to keep our local police services local. The sheriff's department has its own challenges right now. They have their own deficit. They have their own scandals going on. And the big thing here is people are suggesting even the fact that we want to have oversight. If we go to the sheriff, we lose local oversight. We don't have any role in the sheriff's department in terms of overseeing what's happening with police services. So I think that's an important point that we all need to remember. We also need to be careful too, in terms of trying to determine for those that are involved in law enforcement, figuring out what's best for them. I mean, we see this in healthcare and people oftentimes note that administrators will oftentimes be suggesting the best ways to administer healthcare, not even involving the medical community members, actual doctors who have to provide the services. And that's very important here, that our police are part of the discussion, that we're not shortchanging them. We have to remember that we didn't even get voter support to do improvements on our police facility. And so there are needs that are lacking there if we're thinking that we're going to, you know, cut police costs. We still have some other costs that we do need to address with our police. That doesn't mean we shouldn't run an efficient operation and that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be talking with Tri-Cities Mental Health to assure that where there are opportunities to better partner with them, to have mental health experts involved where it's safe and appropriate to do so that we are in fact doing that. Thank you.
Last but not least, Christine.
Thank you for this question and appreciate the framing of the question in looking at how we define public safety. And I think that really is central to this conversation about policing here in Claremont. How do we ensure that every single resident in this community feels safe? And what we've heard from many of our residents is that some of them are not feeling safe. Many people in this community have great trust and faith in our law enforcement. And I think there is the sentiment that they are a strong and responsive group for this community. And we've heard from Black and Brown residents here in our community that some of them have not felt safe. And so how do we ensure that we are defining public safety in an inclusive way that really listens to our residents around what safety means to them? I also think it's important that we align the role with the need in community. So right now, our officers are responding to the issue of homelessness. Last year, our officers responded to over 1,000 calls on homelessness and yet we know that a law enforcement response does not end homelessness. We also know that it's 40% less expensive to support someone in moving off the streets and into permanent housing than it is to respond in a crisis manner, than it is to respond with law enforcement and paramedics. So I want to see us both make the most of the resources we have, maximize existing resources, and allow our officers to really focus on public safety and ensure that every resident in this community feels safe.
Thank you. Question three will start with Zachary. And here's the question. What can the city council do to support small businesses that are here and attract new businesses to Claremont?
It's a great question. It's part of that long-term strategy that I was talking about earlier, about how we can work to close that structural deficit and make sure that we have the resources necessary to run our city. Our businesses are absolutely vital to that mission. And so part of a long-term and short-term strategy are a couple of things. On the short term, we need to continue to help protect and preserve our local businesses. They are under tremendous pressures right now in order to just survive. COVID has been a reality since March. And I've been a little frustrated, you know, seeing other parts of the state and how quickly they've managed to adapt, particularly when it comes to restaurants or other outdoor kinds of entertainments. We've been too slow in that. And I think the city council needs to be more accountable and needs to be quicker off the mark in terms of setting out a plan. It's not always easy to bring people together. It's part of leadership. But that's one of the things I want to focus on when I'm on the city council. In the longer term, you know, it's great that we're a great place to eat out and enjoy ourselves. But I think for a longer-term plan, we need to be more creative in thinking about the resources that we have here in Claremont. We're a college town. How can we leverage the colleges in some ways to bring in new types of businesses? What are some other opportunities that we can think out in terms of business development? We as a council, or the council itself, needs to focus like on those kinds of questions like a laser and they can't stop until we've closed that gap. That will be my commitment and my focus when I get on the city council. Thanks.
Cory, you're next.
I was speaking with one of our businesspeople early today, Sonia Stump, and she commented to me that she was actually very pleased about how quickly the council did move. She recognizes how our process works in this town as, you know, that we do have a reputation about process in our community. But nonetheless, we did work, in her opinion, relatively quickly to get the Al fresco program up and running. And that was in collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce. Keeping in mind too, that some individuals in the community criticized that we weren't looking at completely closing streets and we did look into that. But we got some significant pushback from some of the businesses that had different needs and different operating ways of operating, particularly our retail operations. Some of them need to have upfront parking spaces for pickup. One of them is a holistic medicine provider and so people need to be able to pull right in to be able to pick up items from that location. So that's an important thing about making sure that you're not just having, you know, knowing what's best for others and trying to push a proposal through, but again, making sure you're collaborating to assure that you don't fix one person's problem and create another problem for some other businessperson. So again, working closely with our Chamber of Commerce, we've also had a consultant on staff that's for years, that's helped us with recruiting businesses and placing businesses and shares in what we've been able to accomplish in bringing Super King and others that have been acknowledged by some of the candidates as great businesses here. We're even bringing Amazda dealership in. So we have a lot of things that we have been working on and will continue to work on on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine.
So this has been such a challenge for the last six months, this question of how do we both support our businesses in surviving this time and support our business owners and their employees in their own health and well-being? So I found that this has sometimes felt like a false choice. Either we can keep these businesses open or we can keep our workers safe. And I think, you know, the most important priority in this time is keeping our residents safe and enabling these businesses to thrive because that is also in the best interest of our business owners and our residents. So I'd like to see us support businesses in pivoting during this time. So how can we support them in rethinking what business can look like? How they can pivot their operations to adjust to this pandemic that we know will continue on through the fall and winter, most certainly? I'd like to see us cut red tape and fees for businesses as they navigate the process, whether that be new businesses or existing businesses making those pivots, supporting them in accessing vital resources like the PPP and other federal assistance programs. At the end of the day, how do we support both our businesses and our residents in thriving? And how do we reimagine what that partnership can look like with our businesses? And how do we reimagine what that partnership can look like with our business community that can truly support our residents and support our city for the long term?
Ethan.
Yes, so we're in, it's a bad situation out there for a lot of businesses. And so I'm glad that we have these, you know, new parklets on Yale, and that's a good way for businesses, particularly restaurants, to continue to, you know, make revenue during these restrictive times. I also think that, you know, we need to allocate parking more efficiently in the Village, for instance, you know, business owners, I've been hearing from business owners who say that, you know, there have been changes made in the last, I don't know, maybe five years or so where it's harder for them to park their car all day, and instead now they have to park outside of their own shop and take up one of their own spots, and that isn't good for them. In long term, I think the Village South project brings a lot of, you know, promise to Claremont, another Village expansion south of the train tracks. We can bring a lot of new businesses, diversify our businesses, something that's definitely more geared toward college students, but also things that are good for our senior community. I think we could have the best of both worlds. And also, I would love to form a committee to bring minority-owned businesses to Claremont because there's so much promise out there. And I think that, you know, a new project like this could only be good for Claremont if we do it right.
Did I answer this question?
I think we're on the next question now.
I'm sorry, I got out of order. But this is question three. What can the City Council do? Oh, we did that one. Question four. Actually, question four goes to Cory. I'm sorry, I'm getting out of order. I apologize. Question four is, in what specific ways should the city address the issue of building into our wildlife urban interface and fire severity zones?
I mean, there's currently not any proposal to, I don't know if this is kind of trying to align with the, you know, ask a question relative to the wilderness part. We have preserved, you know, open space that's larger than Griffith Park in Los Angeles and larger than Central Park in New York in perpetuity, and that to a certain extent provides a buffer for any kind of fire, but also to preserve the environment up there and wildlife. I don't know, I know that there have been some questions with regards to some of the development projects that have come before the city, if we're completely following the secret rules. And, you know, I know that we have been following secret rules in considering those projects. It's kind of hard for me to answer this question because I'm not quite sure what the ask, it would be helpful to have some explanation from the asker. I'm not sure if I'm understanding it correctly. This kind of throws me for a loop. Perhaps I'll pass on this one and see if anyone has anything they'd like to add to this, but at this point, you know, like I said, I, you know, we do protect our open space areas, and we, you know, don't have any plans, immediate plans to be building near wilderness corridors. So thank you for that.
Christine.
Can you repeat the question again, please, Barbara?
The question is, what can the City Council do to support small businesses that are, oh no, erase that. In what specific ways should the city address the issue of building into our wildlife urban interface and fire severity zones?
Great. Thank you for this. So I think, you know, broadly speaking, this is an incredibly important topic as we, you know, just endured massive fires and continue to endure massive fires all throughout the state, including the local Bobcat Fire. You know, it's so important that we're mindful of how we're building in those fire severity zones and thinking about this wildlife urban interface. I was just talking with a resident about this yesterday, and she was talking about the importance of thinking about our wildlife and being mindful of our impact to wildlife, especially in those zones. So while, as Cory mentioned, you know, there may not be proposals in front of us right now. I think we can proactively take measures to think about how we create safeguard measures to ensure that we're not building in zones that could create further harm to wildlife, create additional fire risk, and that we, as we think about the future of this city, that we think both about sustainability broadly, sustainability for our residents, but also for the wildlife and for the earth that we sit on.
Thank you. Ethan, would you like to hear the question again?
No, it's fine. No, it's an interesting question. I would say on the subject, you know, my main goals would be, you know, safety and preservation, especially with how dry this part of the earth has gotten. You know, these fire seasons are going to be more and more common. But we saw, we didn't think we could beat what we saw last year, and now we're beating it this year. And I think we should count on the fact that there's going to be a lot more smoke and ashes in Claremont next year sadly. So, you know, on this issue, I don't think, if we do end up, you know, if there are any projects that are built, you know, near our wildlife areas, they have to be very well thought out and have to have a lot of safety protocols, but I wouldn't, it's not something I've thought about much, but I think that preservation and safety are the biggest things to remember here.
Okay, I think that, Zachary.
Yeah, I think this has all been chief in our minds lately because of the unprecedented fires that we've seen throughout California. And we're becoming more aware about how climate change is not only here, it's irreversible. And so we, as a community, need to think more carefully about how we develop. On the Board of Housing, not on the Board of Housing Claremont, but rather the Board of Claremont Heritage, we've been looking at a development around the Livo Canyon area. And as even we think about the built space in our area around Claraboya, we have to be very careful in thinking about fires. There's an insurance program in California now, the California Fair Plan, but we should not be encouraging people to be developing in areas that are prone to fires. We should be very careful about that. I remember back to 2003 and the fire that took out homes in Claraboya. We need to be aware of this problem. We need to work on mitigation in terms of, you know, management of trees, in terms of where we build. This is something that we have to think about as we move into thinking about sustainability in relation to climate change. And so I think this is a good conversation to start having because we're no exception. There's these communities that were impacted by the Bobcat Fire, they're just like us. There are other San Gabriel Valley cities that abut these wilderness areas and these hills that are becoming increasingly dangerous. And so we need to be mindful and proactive in the way that we manage these lands and then in the way in which we manage these developments.
Question five goes to Christine first. There are many controversial and important issues on the city's agenda. What will you do when you disagree with one of your constituents, the staff, committees, district interests? Because your district interests and the city interests may conflict, how will you handle that?
I so appreciate this question just about conflict generally and moments of disagreement that has, it's been my experience on this campaign even, as I talk with residents who might disagree with one another in a given forum or disagree with something that I've said. I think that kind of dialogue is what makes this city so special, is that we are, we do have such diversity of thought here. And it's been a big focus of mine over the last 20 years to build broad coalitions. I've worked with the Chamber of Commerce, I've worked with labor unions, I've worked with government entities, nonprofits, community groups. And, you know, what I've learned through that is not to avoid the tough conversations and not to shy away from those moments where we think something, you know, is in direct opposition, but how do we find the both and? How do we find the common goal and the common vision that rises above the tactics and the strategies that we might be discussing? So I think, you know, certainly while we now have districts here in Claremont, we are representing the entire city. And so it will be so important to listen to our, to the residents of this district while also keeping the needs of the broader city in mind and to build spaces for those rich dialogues where we can disagree with one another, where we can set common vision, and then step into action together.
Next is Ethan.
Yes, so yeah, there is a lot of, there can be a lot of conflict in small-town politics because, you know, a lot of people have said all the decisions that really matter happen on the local level. And so if I were elected to the council, I'd absolutely expect a lot of pushback on certain things from people who disagree with me. I choose to look at disagreement as actually an opportunity to flesh out, you know, the viewpoints that each side has and to really try to come to an understanding. Maybe there are compromises that are ready to be made, maybe there's not. But in the end, I think it's very important to leave a subject with someone on good terms. So at least you know where the other person or where the other party stands. You can respect their decision or their position without necessarily agreeing with it. And it's important to keep those dialogues going even after the decision is made because people want to be kept into the, people want to be kept in the loop. They don't want to feel cut out of the process or avoided. So, you know, I really do think there's a lot of good opportunity for compromise and for, you know, lively discussion on the council, but not with bad result, with, you know, understanding and mutual respect.
Cory. Oh no, Zachary comes next. Zachary, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Barbara. It is a small town, and, you know, we just need to spend a little time on Nextdoor to know that sometimes we can let loose a little bit on social media, and we can get very frustrated with each other and with the city. And I think it's natural and normal, but I also think it's something that we have to work on as a community. You know, I'm no stranger to conflict, trying to work on public issues here in Claremont, but I've always been able to work through it. I think one of the biggest things, and I'll just give you an example, you know, of the work I did or was doing with building a coalition to help consider density in Village South to make it a sustainable development, both environmentally and economically. There was a lot of misgivings in South Claremont, and I think a lot of bad information frankly that was circulating. And what I found was the key to sort of working through that was educating, like arguing, research, talking, reaching out to people, creating a petition. In our case, we put together Inclusive Claremont, Housing Claremont, and Sustainable Claremont, came together and put a petition together, and we did our best to try to educate the community. And I think we managed to turn around a situation where it looked like the council was not going to consider more density in this area. And we did it in a way that was not offensive, we didn't take to Nextdoor, we didn't spread misinformation, we just tried to make our case, and it worked, and it can work. And I think it's that kind of coalition building and local knowledge where we can work around the discomfort and the disagreement and create acceptable policy.
Cory.
One of the greatest concerns of the council as we moved towards districts was assuring that we wouldn't become district-centric, even to the point that if a constituent called from another district, they'd get referred to the councilman from their district. The idea was to have a spirit that we look at the community as a whole. And that's an advantage I have in this race, is I am the only one running at this time who has been elected by the whole, and I have contacts and supporters throughout the community. And so I will continue to have a spirit of looking at things holistically for our community, not just looking at my district alone, because that can be problematic too, from the standpoint that if you sell out other districts and only look at your district, sooner or later that can come back and other councilmembers can do the same to you. Over my time on council, I've demonstrated that in 15 years, I have a lot of, I have several people on my supporter list that have supported me from the very beginning. I think that's an indicator. I think the longer you're on council, to the point that was made, local politics can be very divisive, and so the longer you're here, the more people you anger. I've been very fortunate that over the course of my elections, I've actually increased in the number of voters that have supported me. My votes have increased every time I run for council. Obviously, that's not likely to happen this time now that we've gone to a small district, but I think it demonstrates that I've always recognized my philosophy's been today's friend, tomorrow's opponent, today's opponent, tomorrow's friend. And you've always got to maintain your bridges so that you can bring whoever you need to together to support you on whatever issue you are currently working on. Thank you.
Okay, it's time for closing statements. You have one minute for closing statements, and we'll start with Zachary.
Well, again, thanks to the League of Women Voters, you do an excellent job. I really wish we were at a school right now in front of like live people, but unfortunately, we're in a different period of time. But we're coping, and we're not alone, even though that's the message that keeps getting sent to us. We're a very strong community, and I believe I'm the candidate that has a vision for Claremont to help us through our budget crisis, to help us through COVID, someone who has experience really at all levels, from transportation to homelessness to preservation and historic issues about Claremont. I, you know, and also the fact that, you know, my business is policy, you know, I'm co-director of the Policy Lab here at CMC, so I'm ready and excited to get to work. It may seem like we can't fix these problems, but I tell you, we can. It's just going to take focus and leadership, and I'm ready to get to work on the Claremont City Council, and I'd be honored to have your vote.
Next is Cory.
Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum, and those of you who have taken time to watch this forum from beginning to end. I love this community. Again, I grew up in this community, I care deeply about this community, I care deeply about all the relationships that I've built over the years. And I want to continue working with all of the people that I know in this town to continue to make Claremont the best place it can possibly be. There's always opportunities for improvement, change is inevitable in our lives, but it's important that when we enact change, that we do it in a way where we consider all the possible unintended consequences and that we brought everybody into the picture and that we're collaborating on planning change for the future. I recognize that I work for you, I never forget that I work for you, and I hope that you will let me continue working for you by voting for Cory Kalakai for Claremont City Council on November the 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to the League for hosting tonight's conversation. This has been such a humbling experience to be a part of this campaign and to get to know even more deeply our residents and the concerns and hopes of this community. I have a track record for the last 20 years of working collaboratively with communities to tackle our biggest challenges. And weathering this pandemic and these intersectional crises over the last six months, I realized that I have something meaningful to bring to this city, and I feel so ready and excited to step into this role of local leadership and to bring this track record of bringing people together and in this moment, bringing Claremont together around a shared vision for the future, defining what our challenges are and stepping into action together. I'd be really proud to earn your support. I'd love to talk more with you. You can go to christineforclaremont.com. We have several meet and greets each week and would love to talk with you and get to know your hopes and concerns for Claremont as well.
Thank you. Ethan.
Yeah, so thanks again to the League for putting this on, I appreciate it. I'd like to wrap up with just a little bit more about my, you know, childhood here and my philosophy. You know, as Holocaust survivors, my grandparents always made sure to teach me what hate and racism lead to and why we must always practice acceptance of others in our daily lives, and that's the way I go through life. And as owners of a residential care home that houses low-income people with mental illnesses, my family taught me to treat everyone with not just respect, but dignity, even especially those who are unfairly stigmatized by our society. Some of my best friends growing up were, you know, low-income people with mental illness, and I played with them as a child. And so I grew up really knowing how hard it is for, you know, the most vulnerable people in our society. I've grown up with leaders and mentors who always went out of their way to help their community or someone else's, and now I want to act on behalf of my own community, to apply what I've learned from my mentors in public service. I believe the time has really come for a fresh, proactive, young voice in our City Council, and I encourage you to go to my website, ethonresnick.com, and I'd love to hear from all of you who watch this. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. I want to thank each of you for being here, not just for being here with us tonight, but for all of the things that you're doing to involve the community in your campaigns, and for your willingness to participate in local action that helps improve a community. and for your willingness to participate in local action that helps improve a community. You don't know this, you probably don't know this about me, but I don't live in Claremont. But I think it's amazing and says a lot, not just about Claremont, but about each of you, that you step forward in such a difficult time, in such a small race. You're just one district and I think it's amazing. And if I were in your district, I have no idea who I'd vote for. You're all just terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.